Good evening and thank you for joining us this evening at our City Council meeting tonight. We'll go ahead and get started. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Adamson?
Here.
Bray?
Here.
Cheatham?
Here.
Johnston?
Here.
Lurick?
Here.
Manon?
Here.
Glad?
Here. Thank you. If you'd please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, after which if you would remain standing for the invocation which will be offered by Pastor Carl Pettit from the First Baptist Church.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would you pray with me? Father, as we gather tonight, first of all, thank you for the freedom to be able to do this, to express opinions, to take care of business. God, thank you for blessing this great country. And tonight, as we take care of business, Father, would you be with the conversations in this room, be with the decisions that need to be made, give wisdom to our council and to our leaders in the city, Father, and guide them as they lead us forward? Be with our time tonight in your name, we pray. Amen.
Thank you. Thank you. We'll move on to Agenda Item Number Three is the Consent Agenda. The following business items may be approved by one motion and a vote. If any one member of the council so desires, any matter listed may be moved to a separate agenda item. A. Minutes. Council may wish to waive the oral reading of the minutes and approve the minutes from the clarification meeting and regular council meeting of December 20, 2018, and January 17, 2019. Joint Cities Bennett County School District Number 25 Meeting and the Special City Council Town Hall Meeting held January 29, 2019, and the City Council's special meeting for development of mission value statements of January 31, 2019. B. Treasurers Report. Council may wish to consider the Treasurers Report for January showing cash and investments as of January 31, 2019. Good evening, Joyce.
Good evening, Mayor and Council members. Joyce Stroshine, Chief Financial Officer for the city. Tonight I'm presenting the January Treasurers Report. Okay. Total cash and cash equivalents represent 92 percent of the city's monies totaling $57,387,676. Total long-term investments represent 8 percent of the city's monies totaling $4,715,421. Total cash, cash equivalents, and long-term investments $62,103,97. This number is up $14,168,628 for the month of January. If you recall, in the month of January is when we receive a lot of our major revenues that come in, and these are the monies that have to keep us going through on operations until through to July. So, that, it may seem like a large number, but it has a lot of months to cover. Okay, on page two of the report, I highlight key receipts for the month. Transit grant, State of Idaho, $63,808. Franchise fee, Intermountain Gas, $80,271. This number is down 9.74 percent from fiscal year '18. Franchise fee, Idaho Power, $101,567. This number is down 3.69 percent from a year ago. Idaho State Liquor Tax, $26,294. This number is down 5.29 percent from a year ago. Idaho State Sales Tax Revenue Sharing, $592,36. This number is up 4.36 percent from a year ago. Idaho State Highway User Fees, $687,435. This number is up 7.57 percent from a year ago. We also received our Bennett County taxes and the road and bridge monies as well. The road and bridge monies are, let's see, down 28.56 percent from a year ago, and then the total amount received is $16,82,562 for the month. And the remaining section details the net change of cash for the month of January, for your review. Okay, three of the reports, I report on the trust funds. We had total cash and cash equivalents, $187,735. Then total long-term investments, $3,958,953. So, total cash, cash equivalents, and long-term investments, $5,006,689. Okay, total cash receipts for the month, $48,678. Total cash dispersments, $55,024. Then the net change in cash was $6,345. Okay. Net change in cash and long-term investments, it was a decrease of $24,000. Page four of the report, I list all the funds and their respective fund balances at the end of the month, and the net change for the one-month period. And I've highlighted for you the general fund, which at the end of the month is at Okay, page five of the report is discussion and analysis, and that's presented for your review. Then, page six of the report is our five-year trend balance on cash, on cash, cash fund balances. Okay, and I've highlighted the general fund, and as you can see, we are healthy at the end of this period at $16 million, and you can see the consistent change that we've had. A lot of our policies, the reserve policy, the retirement policy, and the capital project policy, those things have had their impact, and you can see that in the respective accounts. When you look at the capital acquisition or the capital improvement fund, and then you look at the retirement payout trust, those increase in balances are respective because of the policies we've put into place. And they make the city healthier to meet the demands that come across throughout the year, so that we can do the things that we need to do. So, once again, this is a very healthy cash position report, and the two negative balances, of course, are grant funds, and so they're covered by pending grant receivables. So, that concludes my report.
Super, any questions?
I've got one, Joyce. On page two, when you have the road and bridge down by 28.56 percent, is there some explanation for that?
I can give you that. Remember that county road and bridge is based on the county, so they decide how much to levy and how much to take. And then because of the matter roads that we have within the county, we get our allocated share. So, when that's down, it's, a lot of it is based upon their decision-making on what to levy for, for road and bridge.
Okay, so.
So, and I've never been able to get a pinpoint, you know, so that I know that by the time we set our budget, and I will work harder to work with Christie to see if we can get that information prior to us making decisions on road and bridge.
But they just set theirs and we get a percentage of it?
Yeah, we just get a percentage, so we don't have control over the amount. And of course, they receive highway user money, so we get a percentage of that, so that's where it's all coming from. It's what they levy and what they receive in highway user monies. Does that answer your question? Okay?
Any other questions for Joyce? Thank you, Joyce.
Just to make sure that wasn't going to be a page for the law.
Yeah. C. Animal Shelter Advisory Board Reappointment. Council may wish to confirm the mayor's reappointment of Kathy Reynolds to continue her service as a member of the Animal Shelter Advisory Board. Ms. Reynolds' term will begin February 17, 2019, and will expire February 17, 2021. D. Japanese Sister City Subcommittee Appointment. Council may wish to confirm the mayor's appointment of David Hunt to serve as a member of the Japanese Sister City Subcommittee, filling a long-term vacancy. Mr. Hunt's term will begin February 21, 2019, and will expire January 3, 2022. E. Pocatello Arts Council Appointments. Council may wish to confirm the mayor's appointment of Rachel Cooper, Robin Lindbeck, and Paige Weber to serve as members of the Pocatello Arts Council, filling three vacancies. Ms. Cooper's term will begin February 22, 2019, and will expire February 22, 2021. Ms. Lindbeck's term will begin February 22, 2019, and expire August 17, 2021. Ms. Weber's term will begin February 22, 2019, and will expire July 2, 2019. F. Council Decision Vacation of Right-of-Way, of, right-of-way 400 Block of Poole Avenue. Council may wish to adopt this decision vacating the public's interest in the right-of-way located in the 400 Block of Poole Avenue with combining said right-of-way with a larger parcel of Lot 1 Janus Subdivision. G. Council Decision Northgate Zoning and Comprehensive Land Map Amendments. Council may wish to adopt this decision to, one, approve the amendment to the zoning designation requested by Portniff Development LLC comprising of two parcels totaling approximately 38.35 acres located in the recent Northgate Annexation north of Chubbuck Road and west of Olympus Drive to be rezoned from residential medium-density single-family RMS to commercial general CG to residential commercial professional RCP, and to approve the amendment of the comprehensive planned land use designation for those same parcels to be mixed-use, and three, approve the amendment of the comprehensive planned land use designation for an additional 21.04 acres to mixed-use. H. Council Decision Reconsideration of Hearing Examiner's Decision Continual Use Permit for 209 East Lewis. Council may wish to adopt this decision denying the appeal by Gypsy Holdings LLC regarding a conditional use permit from Idaho Housing and Finance Association on behalf of Aid for Friends Incorporated to allow transitional housing and administrative offices in the existing building at 209 East Lewis Street, subject to conditions.
Mr. Mayor, I move we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion by Council President Johnston and a second by Councilman Cheatham. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Johnston?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Manon?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item Four is Communication and Proclamations. We do not have a proclamation, so we'll move to Agenda Item Number Five is a Calendar Review. Council may wish to take this opportunity to inform other council members of upcoming meetings and events that should be called to their attention. On March 7 at 9:00 a.m. will be a budget development meeting. At 5:30 p.m. will be a clarification meeting, and also at March 7 at 6:00 p.m. will be a regular council meeting. March 14 at 9:00 a.m. will be a work session immediately followed by a budget meeting. Other events happening, Pocatello Police Department is accepting applications for their Citizen Police Academy. Application deadline is March 20 at 4:00 p.m. Pocatello Historic Preservation Commission is seeking public comments on a draft preservation plan. See the city's website for more information. City's new app, Pocatello Connect, is available on Apple iTunes and Google Play. We would encourage all to download that app. It doesn't say that here, but that was me.
He's ad-libbing that.
Ad-lib. I better stop that and move on. Agenda Item Number Six, Public Hearing Request to File Special Assessment for Abatement Cost 426 East Sutter. This time has been set aside for council to hear comments regarding a request from staff to file a special assessment with Bennett County for the recovery of city funds utilized to abate a dangerous building located at 426 East Sutter. Funds expended for this, for the demolition of the building total $5,500. I declare the public hearing open. Lynn, the applicant.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Transtrom, one of the building officials for the city. This was a building that had been severely damaged with fire. You gave us the decision to go ahead and abate that building, which we did. The cost of abatement was $5,500. At this point, this is a procedural hearing. This hearing is for procedural reasons, so that we can get your approval to file a special assessment against the property to recover the funds. Any questions?
Questions for Lynn? Lynn, the correspondence, have you received any correspondence?
There have been no correspondence. I've had one phone call, and just requesting the information regarding why a sign had been posted on the property.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Then we would look to entertain any testimony of those supporting the application, any testimony of those uncommitted to the application, any testimony of those opposed to the application. I know how much Lynn likes to talk in front of the cameras, so I'm not going to call him back up, but I declare the public hearing closed. Council decides items before you. How do you wish to proceed? Councilman Bray.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the expenditure of the funds for the building in the total of $5,500, and that we seek to recoup those funds.
Second.
We have a motion by Bray and a second by Manon. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Is that really the way the motion should be?
That's what we're doing, is it?
File a special assessment with Bennett County for the recovery of city funds.
And that, recouping the funds?
That's what I.
The funds have been expended, so you're seeking to recoup the funds.
I said expended and recouped.
Okay. Thank you.
So, with that clarification, Connie, could you please call the roll?
Bray?
Yes.
Manon?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Agenda Item Seven is Public Hearing Vacation of Utility Easement between Ruby Street and Pocatello Creek Road. This time has been set aside for council to hear comments from the public regarding a request from Michael Seibert and Garth Stotter to vacate and abandon the public's interest in a utility easement located between Ruby Street and Pocatello Creek Road, more specifically the north 25 feet of lots four and five, Monavista Acres subdivision. I declare the public hearing open. Council, have, you had any ex parte contact? Okay, doesn't look like it. Then we would look for the applicant. Mike.
Mike Seibert, 1665 Pocatello Creek Road. Garth and myself, we're going kind of on a joint venture to develop our vacant property in this area. Been working over on, behind Redline for a while, getting it cleaned up and trying to get the garbage and the deadwood out of there. And, and we're also, at the same time, the Greenway is looking for putting a trail down through there. We're also working with Redline, because they'd like to see the trail come right into their business operation, because they, they rent bikes also at their hotel. And so, just trying to clean up all the unused vacant easements that can become an occurrence on the property, and, and as the future phases of the Creekside Development develops in there, we'll be able to develop and put lot lines properly. When I was first talking to Merrill about it, he was concerned about a storm drain on the west side along the interstate, but it's really a private storm drain, but it does, when Ruby Street does flood a little bit, it collects city water and runs it in that direction, so he wanted me to leave the west 15-foot of that as part of the easement, which I did. Do that exclusion on the description, so. That's about it.
That's it. Any questions for Mike? Okay. Thank you, Mike. Staff.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. My name's Carl Anderson. I'm a senior planner here at the City of Pocatello. Before you for consideration tonight, as indicated by the applicant, is a petition for the vacation of an access and utility easement designated on the Monavista Acres subdivision requested by Michael Seibert and Garth Stotter. The applicant has indicated that the vacation of easement is necessary to facilitate the planned development of the property for a future trail extension as coordinated with the Pocatello Greenway Foundation. The Monavista Acres subdivision was recorded in 1958 and included 31 lots. The utility and access easement in question is located at the north 25 feet of lots four and five of Block Six, exempting the westmost 15 feet of the north 25 of Lot Four for the purpose of retaining the existing stormwater infrastructure, as indicated. There are no improvements located in the remainder of the subject easement for the purpose of utility and access. All notice and requirements have been met, and no public comment has been received. The City Pocatello Engineering Department recommends approval of the vacation of the easement with the condition that the applicant maintain the westerly 15 feet of the easement as shown on Lot Four, Block Six, which currently has existing stormwater infrastructure, as mentioned. A representative of Intermountain Gas has commented that there are no concerns with the proposed vacation, however, information was provided pertaining to the intended extension of the proposed trail of the existing, over the existing gas line outside of the easement area. Staff has reviewed the application and concludes that the proposal is complying with all applicable standards of Pocatello Municipal Code and State Code, assuming compliance with the conditions listed in the staff report. And this concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions that the council may have.
Council, any questions? Ruth, is the clerk's office received any?
No, sir.
Okay. Super, thank you. Then we would look for any testimony supporting the application, any testimony uncommitted to the application, any testimony opposed to the application. Then I'm not going to give Mike the opportunity to come back up. I'm just going to go ahead and declare the public hearing closed. Council decides items before you. How do you wish to proceed? Councilwoman Adamson.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the request.
With the conditions.
Oh, with the conditions.
Second.
So, we have, we have a motion by Adamson and a second by Lurick. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Adamson?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Manon?
Yes.
Thank you. We'll move to Agenda Item Eight, Short Plaid 2830 Pulling Road Commercial Condominium Subdivision. Steve Gallifant, represented by Crystal Chanda of A&amp;E Engineering, has submitted a short plaid application to create condominiums separating an 18,000-square-foot, more or less, commercial building into two commercial units with a shared common space. The proposed condominium is located at 2830 Pulling Road.
Mr. Mayor, I move we approve the request.
Second.
We have a motion by Council President Johnston and a second by Adamson. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Johnston?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Manon?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item Nine, Sole Source Declaration and Expenditure Utility Billing Department Equipment. Council may wish to accept the recommendations of utility billing staff and declare the purchase of 100 boxes of electronic radio transmitters, ERT, from Hydro Specialties Company, the designated distributor for Itron Water Products, to be a valid sole source expenditure. The equipment purchased in the amount of $192,000 will complete the five-year plan to convert meter-reading equipment to 100 percent radio read. Council may also wish to authorize the mayor to sign documents related to the purchase, subject to legal department review. Funds for this request have been allocated in the Water Department's fiscal year 2019 budget. Council.
Second.
Councilwoman Manon.
All right. I move that we approve Agenda Item Number Nine with utility department equipment purchase and authorize the mayor to sign the documents and, subject to legal department review.
Second.
I thought it was going to be Bray. It was Lurick. So, we have a motion by Manon and a second by Lurick. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Manon?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Thank you.
Agenda Item Ten, Idaho Transportation Department Grant Application ADA Curb Rams. Council may wish to consider the following requests regarding an Idaho Transportation Department ADA Curb Ramp Grant. Approve an application in the amount of $60,000, and if awarded, authorize the mayor, B, authorize the mayor to sign documents related to the grant. The Idaho Americans with Disabilities Act ADA Curb Ramp Program is a state-administered program that provides funding for projects to address curb ramps on the state highway system. A goal of the program is to provide accessible facilities for pedestrians with disabilities while allowing local jurisdictions flexibility in meeting the required standards. Staff anticipates a grant will be awarded in the fall of 2019, and funds will be available after July 1, 2020. There is no local match. Councilman Bray.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the Idaho Transportation Department application for grant of $60,000, and that we authorize the mayor to sign the documents related to the grant.
Second.
We have a motion by Bray and a second by Manon. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Bray?
Yes.
Manon?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item Eleven, Discussion Items. This time has been set aside to hear discussion items not listed on the agenda. Items which appear somewhere else on the agenda will not be discussed at this time. The council is not allowed to take any official action at this meeting on matters brought forward under this agenda item. Items will either be referred to the appropriate staff or scheduled on a subsequent agenda. You must sign in at the start of the meeting in order to be recognized. As a reminder, there's a total of 15 minutes for this and a maximum of three minutes per speaker. Monte Rasmussen.
Monte Rasmussen, I live at 596 Randolph, Pocatello, Idaho. I'm a member of the Alameda Neighborhood Association, and I've had a confusing time with some of your planning and development services' rules and regulations for a home business. And I know probably tonight is not the time to delve into it, but if you could get ahold of your planning and development people, and I've talked to Matt and Melanie, and I even talked to Rich, trying to get some detail of why these are being neglected, and so far, started back May, and here it is, almost May again, and I still have got no answer.
Okay.
I need some help. I don't know specifics. What, can I ask that question?
Sure. Absolutely.
Tell me what the problem is. Why?
Well, when you get this license, this thing to open a home business, several questions on the front that ask you what's going to happen when it happen, when you open this thing, and then on the back, it's got all the rules and regulations you've got to follow by. One of the main ones is that you can't have employees that don't belong at that address, that don't live at that address and reside there. That's being totally neglected. I think mostly, it's kind of a, I mean, this guy's, in the summer, it's real bad, because he's got like three, they gotta be, well, one's a GMC, one's a Chevy, and one's a Dodge, but they're huge $40,000 trucks with 20, at least $20,000 trailers behind each one of them. And what I thought, for me, the most is when the ballgames were going on at the park, and I look out, I live right on the corner of the park, Poplar, and I look out and I see this kid carrying his ball and bag clear down at the park, and I look out, here's one of his units here on the park, and one over here on the park, taking up all of the park. I mean, it ruins the ambience, or whatever you want to call it, for our area and our park. And this guy, not only employs other people that live there, the employees, his next-door neighbor, which is convenient for him, because it's, you know, right there, but, but then that guy owns a, he works for an internet company, which he's got his truck parked in the driveway. Make long story short, what's sitting in, my problem is, there's about a 40-foot trailer sitting in this guy's driveway that's probably got snow machines, or I'm thinking snow-removal equipment in it. And all of his old trucks and everything that he ain't got room for is sitting over against the park. The city's, I've talked to the city street department, the sweeper, they all have to plow around it, they sweep around it. When they come around in the spring to patch, they can't patch, you know, they can't do anything, because there's cars parked right there. And it's the only block, the 700 block of Poplar, that we have any trouble with around that whole block. And being that it's the two houses on the end, everybody else on that block sees them all parked in there, so everybody else just kind of goes, oh, okay, you know? And what really got me is this winner, too, which we're supposed to be not doing. He pulls all, the plow come around and plow He pulls all, the plow come around and plowed his vehicles in. So he digs them out and pulls them out, gets his plow and plows all the snow out of his driveway and everything, pushes it over into the park, and then puts his vehicles back You know, this park is for people, not a business. I would like to see a rule set up where there's no home business around the park area, unless it's a home business that abides by these rules. You're not even supposed to know it's there, you know?
Sure. Are there any other questions for Monte?
So your, your point is more of a complaint about a business that shouldn't be there rather than an application for a business?
Why the rules aren't being followed, is my question. Yes. It's already been applied for, apparently he's got a business there and everything, but none of these rules are even being closely.
Not following the rules. Okay. Any other questions? Okay. Super. Thank you, Monte.
I guess I can expect to hear back.
Appreciate it. We will, I'll visit with our planners and find out what's happening, and somebody will reach out to you.
I visited with Rich Deal, and he promised me he'd call me back, and never heard him yet either.
Okay. Super. Sounds great. Yep, thank you. Appreciate that. We have no other people on the agenda, and so with that, council, thank you for your work this afternoon. You came in early, and we appreciate that. And so, but with that, we are adjourned. Thank you.